Hey, look at God. Hey, now, when we're done with the recording, we can upload this, correct?
Yes.
All right, well, I am so excited about Jesus. I am truly, 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 truly excited about Jesus on this evening. This is a special edition of Kingdom Conversations. I'm Minister Kingdom Adewale, and thank you so much for joining us, whether you are joining us live or if you are coming back by way of replay to connect with us this evening. We are kingdompreneurs, we're kingdom-minded, we're business owners with a kingdom mindset, with a spiritual mindset, and this is that time where we connect and we share what does say the Lord as it relates to just practical matters in business and life and ministry. It's, uh, we are multifaceted, so of course here with Kingdom Conversations and we make that, we also make our lessons sort of multifaceted, but we do have a high concentration in the business aspect. So, we are so excited to have Dr. Carrie White on the line, well, not on the line, but has joined us this evening, and we know that Dr. Carrie, she is our leader, our organizer, she is our host, she's our trailblazer, all of that good stuff, right here for kingdompreneurs, our group, and she is also the, our, the, the director of Refined Heart Outreach Fellowship. She is the ministry leader of that, that awesome ministry that comes and gives us a daily word on, on, on Saturdays, I mean, excuse me, on Sundays at three o'clock, not a daily word, but our weekly word, on Sundays at three o'clock, every Sunday at three o'clock, she, she, she has something prepared for us by way of the Holy Ghost. And then on Monday, she comes back again, turns back around at seven thirty on Monday nights to Eastern Standard Time at seven thirty to bring us another word of mentoring Mondays. And this is where we get mentored in business and mentored, just with different strategies and developments and things to keep us fresh and things to keep us crisp as we are out here to represent the Kingdom of God and to do business, but to do it in God's way. And so she is so multifaceted, so talented and all of that good stuff. So I am so pleased to have her with us this evening, and it's not often that she can join us, why? Because of her hectic schedule, you know, she's a director, she's the ministry leader, and she's engaged in so many other venues and so many other things. And, and so, you know, when she, she catches the replays, I know, because we talk about it, or she'd make a comment about it, which is always a blessing, but to have her with us this evening is truly an honor and a blessing as well. So I thank you also, Ms. Mary, my friend, Ms. Mary, for being here with us this evening for Kingdom Conversations, it's just a delight to always have your support. And then for all of you all who will, like I said, come back by way of replay to catch us, we appreciate you for making the time to be with us on this evening or whatever time that you are connecting with us. All right, so as you know, we have been studying a powerful lesson since the first week of January on, on Ephate coming out of Mark, chapter seven, Mark, chapter seven, and we've been studying about Ephate and be open and what that's been all about. Now, we're just now getting to Ephate, so we've been two days a week, we bring this lesson, but we had to build up to a, lay a foundation for it. We build, we lay a foundation, we build it, and we come back and sort of tear it back down, which is the custom here at Kingdom Conversation, so that we can practically apply the word in the right context for our lives, okay? And so now we are just now getting to the word, we are just now getting to Ephate. Is Dr. White still here? Yes, she is. So we are just now getting to Ephate. We went through, uh, the, the journey to get us there, all right? We went through the journey to get us there, but now we are actually now about to engage in the word Ephate and be open. Now, normally Kingdom Conversations, we know, is aired in the mornings on Saturdays at nine AM Eastern Standard Time and on Wednesdays, seven PM Eastern Standard Time. However, today we had the Fill My Cup Conference that started this afternoon at one PM. And so it was, it was my intention to, to still get up this morning and to still go forth with Kingdom Conversations and then go over to Fill My Cup, but the Lord didn't see it that way, because God gave me the word for Fill My Cup yesterday at six o'clock in the evening, where he gave me the scripture yesterday at six o'clock in the evening. And then, you know, you gotta pray over the scripture and all of that kind of good stuff and, and sit there with some blank paper and sing some praise and worship songs while you wait, you know, saying, "Speak to my heart, Holy Spirit." You know, you, you gotta get into the presence so you can hear what does say the Lord. So me and the Lord began to really flow, we began to, to be in co- I began to be in cooperation with the Holy Spirit for the word to come for today's conference. So I decided to be with the integrity of what we are all about here and to still come forth this evening at six o'clock to bring forth Kingdom Conversations and to continue in our lesson of Ephate to be open. However, once again, the Lord took us another way. And so what we're doing on tonight is, this is what we call the afterglow. This is what we call the afterglow. Now, you know, when you were in the world, you remember you was in the world and you party hearty and all that kind of stuff, and you would probably go club hopping a little bit, and then you went from here to there, to there, to there, and then after it was over, you probably still really weren't ready to go home, so y'all went to what we call up in Detroit, the after hours. You know, those after hour joints that were still open when all the clubs and everything was shut down, and you could still go to the after hours and y'all could stay there, you know, you probably get there around three thirty, four o'clock, or three thirty, and y'all could stay there until, till y'all shut the doors, right? And, and just enjoy spending time and continuing to fellowship in, in your, in y'all's activities, whether, whatever it was you was doing. All right, you know how now when you go to church, you be in the presence, or you in the secret place, or even in your own, the privacy and the comfort of your own home? Oh, she said the hole in the wall, yeah, that's what you probably hit, the hole in the wall. All right, so you be, you know, in the presence where you just don't want to leave the place that you are, where you just still want to continue in the fellowship and want to still continue with hearing from God and experiencing God and enjoying Jesus. You know, the real enjoyment of fellowship and partaking in the fellowship and communion of the Holy Ghost and, and to fellowship with the Father. And so that is where I am. When we dismissed from the conference on this afternoon, I knew in my heart that I was not going to be able...
Looked like she froze.
Just to Kida, you froze. Just letting you know, I don't know if you can hear us, but you froze.
Let me send her a text.
It was good, though, it was getting good, it was getting good. She's coming to that after hour place.
Get that hot, get that hot going on. I just text her, let her know she froze, she'll probably have to come back in. I don't know if she know how to come back in, there she is.
You see me now, you hear me now?
We hear you. No, we hear you, we don't see you.
All right, you see me now, all right. Yeah, there's that pretty lady. So now I knew that we were, we were, I was in a place of just, I just was zonked, I just couldn't move, I couldn't do nothing, I laid across the bed, and I talked to Ms. Mary, I said, "Ms. Mary, there's no way I can do Kingdom Conversations and talk about Ephate to be open." And so she said, "I know, I am even, I'm not even going to work." She was gonna try to go and make a little extra money, she was like, "This is my whole ministry day." So we decided to have a special edition of Kingdom Conversation this evening for us to share the Fill My Cup Conference hosted by Dr. White, Refined Heart Outreach Fellowship. I mean, the power, the anointing, and it's just amazing when you are in different time zones, you're in different codes, and you're doing something that is so different, and God has you going a whole new, different way, uh, because of the, sort of the times basically that we're in and making adjustments or whatever. And so we, Dr. White did it virtually for the first time, she does it twice a year, it's always the fourth Saturday in January, and then always the fourth Saturday in July. So she determines the, the, the fourth week, and God determines, as she said, the date. And so, um, it was amazing, and, um, myself and anybody who joins us, or Ms. Mary, or anybody who has walked in this arena before, where you plan and you strategizing, pulling stuff together, trying to get stuff organized, trying to get people together, trying, you understand, you can only, doesn't mean that you might not have a stress level, or you may not have a frustration level, it doesn't mean that any of those things are eliminated, it just means that God gives us grace to get through it and to deal with it as the thing, as the things come, whether the technology isn't working right, whether we can't, the people aren't returning the calls, or whether, whatever it is, whatever.
Come on, now, come on, now.
You know, it is just simply by the grace of God that he gives us the strength and the ability to still handle, handle it. So we, I believe, can sort of identify, understand so much of the behind the scenes work and so much of the effort that goes into planning a conference like this, and we can tell just by the level of excellence that was done virtually, how much more so if we were face to face, if we were gathered under the roof together. So how much more so would we have, you know, have enjoyed and been just serenaded by the presence of the Lord and been just swept up under the anointing of the word of God that flowed in this place today, but just how much more so it would have even been if we were in one roof, under one roof. And so I'm just so excited to have Dr. White. Dr. White, I just want to personally, first of all, just say thank you so much for your labor of love. I want to thank you for the time that it has taken you, the prayers, the sweat, the tears, the, the going back and forth, the questioning God, the waiting on God, the hearing from God, you know, just everything, um, that you, you went through to make today, today. And we know, of course, we know, it couldn't have been done, you know, without the help and the orchestration of the Holy Ghost. So we know it's that we're honoring the God that uses you as the vessel that you are, all right? And so, uh, but we also give credit where credit is due, and you were a willing vessel. You were a willing vessel to the work of the Lord, you were obedient and submissive, and I just, I mean, I'm embasking in the, in the, in this afterglow. Dr. White, if you have not been, have you have not had a chance to actually watch the Fill My Cup Conference, uh, um, this year it was based on The Shining, The Shining, awesome, awesome topic, The Shining. And so she livestreamed it into her YouTube, Refined Heart Outreach Fellowship, her YouTube, so you can go back there and actually catch it, catch the replay of the conference there. From the time we opened up in prayer to the dancers, to the, to the, to the soloist, our praise and worship leader, to just the words of encouragement that was given by others who had also joined in with us, to, to us, myself, oh, thank you, Dr. White, for posting that, uh, she has posted it, so you can always click there on the link and it'll take you right there, um, to myself and Dr. White for bringing such a powerful, dynamic word. So we just want to take this time to honor you, women of God, on Kingdom Conversation. As always, I always open up with Kingdom Conversations and say thank you for extending to us this platform, because you did, and you gave us a platform to teach the word of God and to, um, just, to just be able to share the, the, the word, what does say the Lord. So we, I thank you personally for extending to me the platform to do that. However, this is not about me, this is not Kingdom, about Kingdom Conversations, this is really just about you to say thank you for all that you contribute, all that you pour out, the purpose that God has called you to, um, and the gifting that you walk in, your gift, your calling, that you're excited about, you're passionate about. And I believe we, I believe in one of your mentoring Mondays, couple of Mondays back, you called it, I think you called it a harmonic sea, a harmonic sea. When you're flowing and everything is tuned up just right, and it's, it's all flowing together, and you are definitely in your harmonic sea, um, in what God has called you to do, regardless of the circumstances and all the adversity and all of what you might stand in need of, or whatever else, emotional things and health issues, whatever, but you're still flowing in spite of, in your harmonic sea. And I just want to commend, commend you and publicly tell you how do you are to me and what you mean to the ministry and what you actually mean to the body of Christ. And so, so you know, I just wanted to share that with you. So, um, I want to encourage our viewers, once again, to go back, click on the link and join in that livestream and get it. I mean, Dr. White ministered in such a way, now Nora Jihad says to me all the time, she said, "You go too fast, slow down." So I'll be working on it, and sometimes I'll be saying, "Okay, in the middle of Kingdom Conversation," I would say, "Oh, I think, I hear Nora telling me," it's like I could hear her saying, "Kida, you going too fast, slow down." And I say, and I, and I'll be talking just to Nora, and I said, "Okay, wait a minute, Nora, I'mma slow down, let me catch my breath," and then I slow down, and then I repeat it, or whatever. And so today, as Dr. White was ministering, I now know what Nora Jihad means, because that word was so rich and it was so good that Dr. Carrie was in her harmonic sea and she was flowing and ministering, and I was writing it down, I really, and I, I take copious notes, and I mean, I was really getting into it, and then after a while, I was like Nicole, I was just like, I had to just sort of stop and go to praising God and say, "I'll catch you when she posted," and I'll go back to, to really get into the, to the, to the note-taking part, because it was such a ministering moment. So you know, when we, when we talked about Ephate, one of the things that we, we mentioned is about when Jesus took the man from the crowd, brought him alone, and had his own one-on-one ministering moment with the deaf man, um, during that time. And so this was a real ministering moment, like Dr., like it was like, "I'm coming out of the crowd, I just need to hear you, Lord," and we have wonderful comments, you know, people were talking about they were sitting at the feet, they were just sitting there gleaning and taking it all in, right? And so we had those awesome moments, um, that, that's exactly how I felt, that's exactly what I did, was I sat there and I just, I just let the, the anointing just ooze, enjoy the oozing of the Holy Spirit that was emanating from Dr. White on today. And so I know exactly what it means, like, you know, you're trying to take those notes, but you, you having that ministering moment, you want to hear, you want to let the Holy Spirit process it in you, um, and you want to chew on it, and so you would know how to, how it can be applicable for you. And so, Dr. White, thank you so much, I'm going to extend the floor to you, so, so you can maybe even talk a little bit more about the Fill My Cup Conference. I look at Ms. Mary, and Ms., oh yeah, Ms. Mary, Ms. Mary, I want to extend the floor to you first, because I do know Dr. White does have another engagement, but I'mma extend the, the floor to you first before I let Dr. White come, and, um, it's not, this, this, this is authentic, okay? This right here is real. So I don't know if you ever came to Kingdom Conversations before or not, but those who are regulars to Kingdom Conversations know that this is a real, authentic conversation, all right? This is a real, this is from heart to heart, this is from breast to breast, this is real, all right? This is real, this is truly heartfelt to be able to labor in the gospel alongside. Um, thank you for joining us, Jay, to labor alongside someone in the gospel that you truly value and appreciate. Jada, get off of there, that's my son, Jada. I didn't know that. Uh, to really truly be able to label, uh, labor in the gospel besides someone that you truly esteem and you truly value and you trust, that you trust, that you trust. And so I just want to thank God, I'm going to give the floor to you now, Ms. Mary, you can go ahead.
Well, I thank you so much. Um, I am seriously still very full, um, as Minister Kida explained, it, I couldn't do anything else, I had to stay, had to stay home, I had to stay with my family and just bask in the peace that's going on and that's radiating in my home right now. And it is, it is exactly from the word of God, it was, the conference was mind-blowing. There was so many, there was so many nuggets that was placed in there. Minister Kida, she started it out, well, actually, going back a little bit, just talking about the prayer that opened us up, and then the songbird that just blew us away because, and saying, "Because of who you are," and then that just put us in that worship mode right there, and it stayed, we had encouraging words, and it was just so awesome. And even, um, Dr. Carrie's very own apostle gave some encouraging words, totally awesome man of God. And I, I, I took notes, I started taking notes in order of service, and, and I got some good stuff from Minister Kida, I mean, it was just mind-boggling, and I was amazed that I could keep up with it, because she does talk fast. However, when it got to Dr. Carrie, oh my God, I, I, I started taking copious notes, at least I thought I was taking copious notes, I did get some notes, but I got to the point where I couldn't even write anything down, I said, I told Minister Kida earlier, "I gotta go back so I can get my notes in, because I just was so floored by, by the way that, that God used her as that earthen vessel to bring out his word, to bring out his spirit and to bring us all, as Minister Kida said, heart to heart, breast to breast, because everyone was feeling the presence of the Spirit." And it's a wonderful thing about technology that even through wires and betas and all of the things that we need to bring us to a point where we can see and hear each other on a device, for the Holy Spirit just to go inside and knit through all of that, to bring us all to a worship experience, you know, to a worship time, a worship season, that we can just take a moment and bask in the glow, and that's just awesome. And I loved Dr. Carrie from the first moment I heard her speak at another conference given by, hosted by our own Minister Kida. And I told Kida at that time, "Uh-uh, she had, she left too early, I needed some more, I gotta hear her again," and I've been following her ever since as a leader and a teacher. And I just love her so much, I love you, Dr. Carrie, and you know that I do, from deep, deep, deep in the bones, I love you, because that's a Jesus thing, because we don't always choose the people who God brings into our life, but we know it's for good. And I never asked for friends, I never asked for anything, any friend or relationship that I have in my life, God brings it to me. I told the Lord a long time ago that I would never ask for another friend, I would never ask for a sister, I wouldn't do that, but yet and still, he has brought all of that to me, and they have been long-lasting, the longevity is there, we don't see each other all the time, but the sisterhood, the bond is still there. And I thank God that he brought me into your presence, because now I get to sit at the feet and I get to glean, and honey, I've been gleaning, I've been gleaning, and I, I just love you so much, and the word today was just a, a, a cherry on top. It is that gumdrop for the soul, you give us something for our soul, and then you give us all that word and all, all the, 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 the Greek word and the Hebrew word, and then we gotta go back and chew on that, because we gotta learn how to apply it to our life. So it was just amazing, now, I'm not gonna belabor the time, I'm not gonna do that, but I just wanted to get all of that out, and I probably still got a lot more in there, but I almost started preaching when we, when we was finished with the conference, because I was just so full. But I do want to say thank you. I do want to say thank you, because she got me so excited, I was yelling, I was yelling on, on the Zoom, and it was, but it was just so good, God is so good, and, and I appreciate God, and I thank him for the vessel that you are, the willing vessel that you are. I, I, I turn the floor over to you at this point, and I do want to say thank you, Minister Kida, you know you my heart, you know you my love, I just love you so much, we've been knowing each other for many, many, many years, and I don't need to go, um, I don't need to go a long period of time, because you already know how I feel about you, but others, she is truly a woman of God, Minister Carrie.
All right, I was doing this saying, "Keep going, keep going, keep going," I wasn't telling you to quit. Now, now, I got a pop-up, I got a pop-up on my ear, saying, "My time was running low." So if we run out, do we, do we start over, or do we? Uh, do, uh, let's see, can you make me a co-host? Okay. Now, how do I? Uh, go to participants. Okay. Go to my name. Uh-huh. As a matter of fact, I think you can either make me host or co-host, if you make me host, then, yeah, then that should keep the meeting going. I made you host. Alrighty, that should keep the meeting going, all right. Praise our God, well, listen, guys, oh my goodness, all those accolades out there, and then, ugh! You know, I'm, you know that, I just love you, I love each and every one of you, I love the Lord, and I love what he is allowing me to do. Uh, you know, as I've shared with you guys, um, through mentoring Mondays and through our Refined Heart Outreach Services, I'm just transparent, I'm just gonna be me, I'mma let you see me, and this is me, and if God can use a mess like me to bring his message, then what a wonderful God he is, okay? And that, that's just what we do. I love the fact that he took me a different way with this conference, and it has had such, oh my God, such an impact. Um, I've gotten calls and texts and notes and, and, and all kinds of things from people that were a part of it and how blessed they were, or how the Lord spoke to them, and, and it doesn't matter from, from, from the pillar to the pew, you know? Uh, it, it, everyone that has, has responded, has, has, you know, uh, Lord, I mean, I won't say the names, but I, I've been on the phone pretty much since we ended the conference, I tried to chew a little piece of something, and I had to chew it while I was talking, because the phone, as soon as I would hang up, it would ring again. Uh, but I praise God, because that meant what we did was what he wanted done. Um, and, and I want to say to you, Minister Kida Adewale, ma, 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 I'm gonna have to share my nickname with you now, spark plug. I'm gonna have to share my nickname with you. Straight, I get it started, let's, let's set it off, ignite, hey, ignition, let's go. Hallelujah, yes, I'mma have to share, I'll have to share my nickname with you, girl, because that was pure and deep, set it off fire, what you did, how God was able, in that short span, see, when we get out the way, that's what's so beautiful about it. When we get out the way and let God do what he do, he does it well. And you, even as you have said about me, I see about you, you are a willing vessel to allow God to have his way in whatever it is that he has given for you to do. And I thank you for being, as you say, transparent, being obedient, being willing, being a willing vessel, because if you were not, we would not have been blessed the way we were. And I appreciate how you hear from him, I appreciate how you flow in him, and I appreciate how you don't get beyond him. Too often is, you know, even as toward the end of the, the, the message, you know, when I said to you guys at the end, I said, "Well, there's a whole lot more here," but God, Holy Ghost says, "Stop right here," because what was coming up behind that was about those that are, are out there that get so into the, the, what they do, that they leave God behind. Where did that come from? That's those first two verses of where we were in 2 Corinthians four, the verses one to, one through, uh, uh, four, well, one through three. When he talks about preachers getting beyond themselves, preachers that, that, you know, and all of that, well, I'm not gonna pre- preach that, I might do that for tomorrow, I don't know, but I've got the notes there, because God gave me even an extra expansion of that, and, and be it as that he was warning me, or if he was sharing with me, or if he was telling me, "Girl, don't you do that," amen. So, you know, I, I, I accept that, and I thank you, Sister Mary Lane, because I know that your heart is right before God, both of you, yeah, and those that are gonna be watching this, understand that these ladies right here, they love them some Jesus. So if they share something with you that the Lord has given for them, you need to make sure you get your ears, get the cotton swab, and get your ears cleaned out, uh-huh, get, take shades off and see what God is trying to tell you, because they're... because they're not gonna share nothing with you but Jesus. Whether it's gumdrops for the soul, yes, yes, the ministry has begun. Sister Girlfriend asked me if, if I would, would step and walk with her in this spiritual walk? Yes, I will and gumdrops for the soul has begun, amen.
Amen, amen, amen.
That, you, it's that, ready, take, hold, charge, it's time. Hallelujah, amen. A- a- and I, ooh, I, Holy Ghost has got chills rolling all up and down, Mrs. Girlfriend, that's it, yeah, yeah, okay. Some of y'all, forget, Fill My Cup is, is right here. It's inauguration time for gumdrop for the soul.
Wow.
For Jesus, I feel you.
Oh my Lord.
Oh my Lord. I feel your presence, oh my God, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you, Lord.
Praise God.
There is so much that you have damned up, Sister Marilyn. Situations, circumstances, people, opinions, all of that has made you think that the gifting that God gave you wasn't for this season, it is for now. And it is time for you to go forth. It is time for you to walk forward in the gifting that God come, like I told you before, when you were on the phone, you have crossed out, but it's time for you to cross in.
Come on.
Move in your gifting.
Yes, ma'am.
Minister Kida is right there to help you, I am, yes, you ask for the mentor, I step into that role.
Amen, amen.
Holy Spirit has said, step in, yes, ma'am, I step in. And when you step into the role with me, you are also stepping into the role with my Apostle, Apostle Ramon Magia. We've already had the conversation. Amen.
That's right.
We have already had the conversation. Hallelujah. Because you, what, what, what we have to come to understand is our ministry isn't our ministry, it's just our work of the ministry. It's His ministry, we just work in it. And when we get beyond to thinking that we are the ones that are orchestrating, we're the ones that's setting it up and we just allow Holy Spirit to do what He's going to do, how He's going to do it, the ministry work goes forth. So gumdrops for the soul. And, and, and I need you going to get your EIN. Mm-hmm. Yep, going to get that, going, going and start, get all the little.
I started it right before this call, I started it, I actually had to go, gotta go back and finish getting my EIN. I had just started when we got off the phone.
Amen. God said it, go see, is that or not a, a confirmation, Siskida? That is.
Absolutely, amen, that's it. And she said nothing, she said nothing about it when we were on the phone. When, um, I, she did ask me a question, what was the name of my ministry? And of course, you know, I'm involved with Beyond Brick and Mortars. And I told her that, I said, but the Lord is telling me it's gumdrop for the soul, something sweet to chew on. So she was like, oh yeah, that's it, so.
That's it. Hallelujah.
Walking forward and that's just confirmation, I thank you so much for that, I mean, I'mma, no, I'mma shut it up.
Oh no, you ain't gotta shut it up, you ain't gotta shut it up because see, that's what, that's the reason for this call today, amen. That, that, that's the reason because see, out of the mouth of two or three, uh, three shall a thing be established.
Yes.
And even though you're walking with me, you're also walking with your mentor, Minister Kida Adewale.
Yes, yes.
We have to understand that there's no, we don't have any exclusivity here. Lord be unto God, there are things that Minister Adewale will be able to show you and, and walk with you and walk through with you that I may not see. Hallelujah, there are things that I will be able to walk through and, and show you that she may not see. And listen, Apostle Ramon got his hands cut out, he got his work cut out for him because he knows that this, this is right here, I'm, I'm something else. Hallelujah, but he welcomes the work. Hallelujah, he welcomes the work. So, uh, I, I, I am just so pleased that God has allowed me to be that, that, that voice, that herald, that trumpet that says, da, 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 da. Gumdrop for the soul. Yes, hallelujah.
Yes, you're heard in here first, folks.
Hallelujah. Yes, yes, yes. So, uh, ooh, ma, 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 so we're gonna definitely have you talk, um, with, with Minister Ramon because he's gonna give us some, um, instructions or some information about the correct way, you know, uh, to, to formalize the ministry, uh, when it comes to the, all those legalities that go on, you know, with Uncle Sam and, and cousin fraud and all them. Yeah, so, uh, because we want things done right. Decent, amen, amen. I'm, you know, I, when I set up Refine Heart Outreach Fellowship, I knew at the time, I did not have a mentor, uh, and, 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 um, I was, you know, didn't want to try to do this thing by myself and mess up, so I went through a service. But I, I, you know, God has now allowed me to connect to, um, ministry partners to where I don't have to go pay somebody hundreds of dollars to do, to tell me, you know, send this paperwork in and here and pull this paperwork out there. Amen, so we thank God for, oh my goodness, something has just fell in my house, I don't know what it is, I ain't going to see it right now, I'm talking. So I'll pick it up whenever, because if it's on the floor, it's on the floor, right? Amen, so, um, I thank God for what He is doing through Fill My Cup because basically what He said is for us to begin to shine in the knowledge that He is giving us. And as He is giving us that knowledge, and I'm gonna say this last little thing and then I'm gonna let it go. Uh, as I was talking to Ms., uh, to, to, to Minister Marilyn, yes, we, we, we will take care of that, 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 that official, all that stuff, we get all that set up too, amen, praise the Lord. Hallelujah, and that. Well, but, yeah. And Sister Dorothy, look at there, look at there.
Thanks for joining us, Sister Dorothy.
So, yeah, we, we.
Hello.
Amen, praise God, glad to see you here, amen. Um, but my last little comment, Mrs. Sister Marilyn, we'll be talking and, 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 um, said, get the steps that we need to get the steps to, to, for your, the, 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 what do they call them, the ceremonial stuff, we're, we're talking. Now, Scripture says, lay hands quickly, suddenly on no man, you know? That means you're gonna walk with me for a minute, okay?
Amen.
Amen, praise the Lord. Okay, remember what I told you and I want you guys to get this image in your heads. The, uh, Sister Marilyn, I told her about it already. When I was, I got off the phone, I was ministering, God dropped a, a, um, a vision in my spirit and all of what happened earlier today was captured in this one vision. I need you to picture, pic, P-I-C-T-U-R-E, yeah. Picture, or make a photo. Yeah, Lord, of a picture, P-I-T-C-H-E-R, a clear glass pitcher. I need you to see that glass pitcher tilted and pouring out, the clear, crystal clear, beautiful, cool, satisfying, refreshing water of the Spirit. I need you to see a measuring cup underneath it, you know, the clear glass measuring cup with the red line. I need you to see it fill up, but then notice that the, the pitcher is continuing to pour. And then the, what's in the container, even though it's full, it can't hold anymore so it starts to spill over the top.
Her measuring cup.
It begins to overflow. But it will continue, the cup will stay full because the Spirit continues to pour in. And as you pour out, the Spirit can continue to pour in. But if you ever stop pouring out, if you ever put a cap on it, the Spirit can no longer pour in. So I need you to read that picture. That clear vase pouring into your spirit and you allowing it to overflow into those around you or that which no longer serves you is there to serve others that are attached to you. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. That's all those cups. In Jesus' name.
Wonderful.
That's good, hallelujah. Dr. White, thank you so much for being with us this evening. Um, this was a special edition, as I mentioned, for Kingdom Conversations just because we were still in the afterglow of this evening, so this afternoon's Fill My Cup Conference. And the Lord continued to show up with us again, just this, just this brief time to share with Dr. White and just to honor her and to thank her. So before she leaves, um, she do, she does have another obligation. If Nora Jihan or if Sister Dorothy would like to share just a few brief words with, um, Dr. Carrie before she leaves, you do have an opportunity.
I don't have anything really, except for I'm gonna keep that picture in mind about the pitcher overflowing.
I know, isn't that awesome?
Yes.
Awesome.
Yes, I'm gonna take it back on Nora Jihai. Uh, that was a great, um, demonstration or something to think about visual. To let that water, let the Holy Spirit continue to fill our cup, that it would run over so that it would flow on other people that I like.
Amen. Amen. And the scripture that goes along with that, I don't have the reference to it, but as he just reminded me, there is a word that says, God has dealt to every man a measure of faith. You know, what goes beyond that isn't for you, but it's for those connected to you. Amen.
Amen.
Amen. Amen. I'm a Russian. I'm Russian, that's, I'm, I'm a, I'm a well-done cookie. So thankful for you, Dr. Carrie, so we do know that you have to leave. So we're just gonna close with a quick word of prayer and then we're gonna disconnect. So Father God, we just thank you so much for the love and the fellowship, the connection and relationships um, here within our Kingdom Renewers group. And we pray, God, that you will continue to be glorified in our group and God, that you will continue to allow us to edify the body of Christ, edify and build each other up and to help us to be better for kingdom work and for kingdom building. We thank you for the woman of God who you have given this vision and we pray, God, that you will continue to send laborers and those who truly labor and care for the soul, for her soul and for the ministry and for the vision. We pray, God, that we will be guardians of that vision, we will protect it and, God, we will serve it with all that we have, God, all that you have given us for this ministry. And we just thank you, God, that you will continue, Lord God, to fill our cups. That we are, you will fill it, God, you will fill our cup and we thank you for the overflow that's meant for others. And it is in the name of Jesus Christ we pray, amen.
Amen. The scripture is Romans 12 and 3.
See, there we go.
There you go.
Amen.
God bless everyone.
All right, God bless you, Dr. Carrie, so we can end the recording now? We're gonna stop, I'm like, Dr. Carrie, we can go ahead and stop the recording now.